Minutes from June 12.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June 12.
All those in favor? New business, Lewis and Street House, building one single family house in Lewis and Street Gateway Zone Planning Board approval required.
If applicant, if you can step up to the podium. It's this is a so basically in the Lewis and Street Gateway Zone, you need to go to the planning board to do a house. It's a quasi industrial zone. The location of the site is essentially you go out on 121 towards Poland. And you will, it's essentially the last parcel mechanic falls across the street from New England Public Warehouse. So. Yeah, there you go. The motors, could you press the green button or the button to make it go green? There we go.
Yeah.
Awesome. Now you got it. So yeah, that's why we have a packet here. I'll have you sign this packet. At the end, so that will be signed, but we're going to do this in two parts. Essentially, they're going to go through the packet and verify all the information's there.
Okay.
And then they'll give a vote on the actual project. So anyways, I'll lead over to the board.
Alright, so let's review the application. Page one. Look complete. Page two, questions six through 10. Wait. Okay, page three, questions 11 through eight through 19. Complete. Question, page four, questions 20 through 23.
On question 20, it says septic is a disposal. We do have a letter from a licensed side evaluator stating the soils are adequate for a septic.
The final page, question 24. We need a signature, obviously.
Yes, yeah, I'll have him sign the original. Other than that, the this is a minor development, so they didn't have to do site inventory or wetlands analysis or anything like that. So that's why you won't see those plans here.
Any questions?
This one also has the DOG approval already. So this one does not need a condition for that.
Made sure everything was ready for you guys.
I don't see any point to making you go through telling us about it because it seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, the reason that is is because it's technically a special exception. In the ordinance, so that's something I would suggest taking a look at in the conference of planning process or even as a board before then. I get the point of the zone, but there are so many homes in the zone already. I know when you go at the other side of the line into Poland, they also do not allow single family homes there because they want that corridor corridor to be developed. Commercially industrially. And that was sort of the idea here, but they still allow housing. You just got to go through the planning board process, which adds another step, adds another expense. But with that said, this is a lot of the stuff he'd have to submit otherwise, you know. He just want to have to pay the hundred dollar fee to go to planning board and show up to planning board. But yeah, that's something that I would suggest looking at in the future. Is making it so people can just go through the code office for a house in the zone.
Ryan, can we make sure that that is just added as a point for our first members? You know, in the future, when they get ready to resume their comp, they can stand if that's possible.
Yeah, sure.
So Ryan, you want to go through the findings of facts real quick? Let you do it instead of me doing it.
Sure. Alright, so. Through our finding of facts, applicant will get a copy of this. Right now, we just have a draft. So in the matter of the Lewis and Street House, the development review application. It's one single family house, current vacant land. It's currently 39,204 square feet of land area, so it is a legally non-conforming lot. Essentially a grandfathered lot because it doesn't meet the minimum size by about 800 square feet. With that said, it's still legal to build on. 165 feet of frontage, that's all per the assessing data. So on June 28th, we mail the butter notifications and today we will vote to approve or deny and we'll fill that out. Conclusion is a law, so this is the development and review criteria. Aesthetic, cultural, natural values, there's nothing impacted there. Conformity of local ordinances and plans. There's nothing I saw that violates any ordinance here. Erosion, same thing, this is not a very large activity and standard erosion control will be fine. Financial burden on the town, there's nothing here that provides that. Financial and technical ability, again, it's a pretty straightforward project. Nothing technical needed there. Flood areas, there are no flood areas on the parcel according to the FEMA map. And this is also outside of the shoreline zone. It's pretty close to the river, but it is outside of the shoreline zone. So freshwater wetlands, nothing on the map sites for the state of Maine. Groundwater, nothing here should adversely impact groundwater and we do have soil tests completed already. Municipal solid waste disposal, nothing will cause an unreasonable burden here. Municipal water supply, I will not place a burden on the water supply. Neighborhood compatibility, again, when you look at the criteria here, it still keeps the neighborhood safe and helpful. Pollution, nothing too strenuous here. Riverbrook, river stream or brook. So you can see on your, there's an aerial picture, you'll see the Ashkagan River, but we are more than 75 feet away, which is the criteria. But also again, 250 feet to shoreline, this is over 250 feet away from that. Suits disposal, we do have proof that it does have adequate soils for that. Stormwater control, it doesn't require for this project because it's minor. Sufficient water, it does have sufficient water. Are you, you're well for this, correct?
Will be doing well, yes.
Yeah, so we'll have a well for this.
Yeah.
And that was on the plan to. Traffic, nothing will be, will impact traffic negatively. He already has DOT approval. So there's no condition required for that. And then fire protection, there's a fire hydrant right across the street and even so, a project like this doesn't really require it. So with that said, no waivers are required for this project and I don't see any conditions of approval here. Unless the planning board saw a reasonable condition to put on the project.
So, any comments? Not, can I have a motion to approve?
I will make a motion.
Can you try, yeah, got it.
Motion to approve the application and finding of facts for the development of a one family, single home in the gateway zone.
All those in favor? Let's vote.
Alright, for to zero, I'll get you a copy of your finding of facts, but you can come in for your building permit tomorrow.
Okay.
From this guy.
Perfect.
Oh, you won't be here. Friday.
Friday?
Yeah.
Do I need to wait for the rest of the meeting to sign something? You said I need to sign something after?
Yeah, I'll get you that now.
Okay.
Try to make that as painless as possible. Okay, Shannon.
As it start as complete and now we have to approve this being okay, Ryan?
I think she, she included that in her motion, wants to approve the application and yeah, at the same time.
Right here.
Alright, thanks.
All set, you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Item 5.2 North Street Garage, you just want to use permit for automotive repair and welding business. How's it going?
Good, alright, so I'm gonna tee this up. So essentially, we have an existing building here. You recognize this building, it was approved to be a car detailing place over a year ago, maybe? On North Main, used to be a car repair and car sales lot. But because it has not been that used for at least one year, he has to go back to planning board approval. Again, something else we can look at, we'll discuss later in the meeting on ways we can resolve that, but. Yeah, would you like to tell the planning board what you're looking to do?
Yeah, I'm just looking to work on cars. I do a little bit of welding, work on some small equipment. No sales, anything like that. Yes, that's about it.
Okay. Let's go through the application. Page one. Questions one through five, does it look complete? Okay. Page two, questions six through 10. Any questions? Page three, questions 11 through 19. Complete.
And a lot of not applicable because it's already a developed lot.
Questions 20 through 23. Complete. Questions, the final page, questions 24. So any questions on this? Any Shannon?
No, no questions. The only thing that I did notice on that is on section. It's more semantic than anything Walter will just be section B. Just making sure that we filled out the number of the butters and total cost for Melanie would be the only thing.
Yeah, it's incredible number.
Yeah. Let's see. He did have quite a few of butters on this.
Yeah, interesting I could put that, that in there.
A total of 25. Five of those were direct to butters and then 20 within 500 feet. So 25 total.
So Ryan, I'm going to ask you to go through the findings of fact again.
Okay. Alright, again, you have a very easy application because it's an existing building. So you'll get a copy of these finding of facts over the next few days. Or into next week. So in the matter of the 84 North Main Street Garage, it's a conditional use permit. For automotive repair and welding. Let's see, currently 26,136 square feet of land and 265 feet of frontage according to the assessor. June 28th, we mail the butter notifications as required in section 200-3.5D. And today we will vote to approve or deny, so conclusion is a lot. Aesthetic, cultural, and natural values, nothing affecting habitat here. Conformity of local ordinances and plans, this isn't allowed use in the zone. It is a conditional use permit and the lot does comply with the zoning ordinance. Erosion, so the proposed activity, no erosion, there's no construction happening. Financial burn on the town, none. Financial and technical ability, again, there's nothing here in terms of development that requires that. Flood areas, there are no flood areas identified, no wetlands. Groundwater impact should be minimal, seeing how there's no construction. Municipal solid waste disposal, no unreasonable burden. Municipal water supply, there's not an unreasonable burden here. Neighborhood compatibility, again, this is, this is an existing building already for this use in the past, so neighborhood compatibility is not an issue. Pollution, nothing strenuous. River stream or brook, this is more than 250 feet away from any major stream or brook. Suits disposal, there is adequate provisions for that. Stormwater, again, there's no construction, so no advanced provisions required. Sufficient water, yes, traffic. So one of the recommended conditions of approval is an applicant must submit for DOT approval for entrance on 124 before operating the business. It's already been approved for that before, but because it's a change of use, that would be recommended. And then fire protection, the proposed activity does have adequate fire protection for this, given the NFPA standard. So waivers, it requires no waivers. So those are the finding effects.
Right, Chris is going to start doing welding and repair, needs a DOT permit?
Yes.
The recommendation is not required though.
Yeah, not required.
Questions? Right here. If there's no questions, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the application for site development as complete. And approve the finding of facts. For Rusty Nut's Auto.
What about the DOT?
Well, that's a condition of approval, correct?
It's the staff recommendation, I don't know.
It's up to you on whether you include that or not, is what you're saying.
We would include that, to include the condition of approval for the DOT information.
All those in favor? It's a vote. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll get you, we'll get you a copy of the funny facts for the next few days.
Do I need to get that DOT for the entrance?
Correct, yes, contact the Southern Maine office and then just they'll have someone come out and look things over.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Hey Ryan. Sorry Walter, I just have a quick question. When it comes to the cost of notifying the butters, is that a cost that tracks through to the applicant or does the town pay for that?
That is something the applicant pays for.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah, so technically by ordinance, no one has to be notified by a certified mail. However, it's still good practice too. So given how this had 25 of butters, the system we've been using is notifying certified to direct a butters. So that was five of them this time and the other one's just by regular first class mail. So that's 68 cents of mailing, I believe, right now. And then the, it's 8.69 for the certified, so doing that math out, he was, you know, 50 bucks or something like that for a butter notifications.
Okay, good for them, thank you.
Yeah.
Next item of business, old business zoning ordinance amendments.
And so I'll start just by saying, I know I mentioned earlier, so this was the one we just reviewed. It was a garage at one point, had car sales, it was a garage. In our ordinance, we require conditional use permits so we can put conditions on. There are ordinances that essentially say if the use was there before. As long as it's not like expanded, they can continue that use. So they don't have to go back through this. Because he had to pay, you know, a hundred bucks to come back, plus the butter notifications. So if you guys are not interested or don't feel like you add value to applications like this. We could do some ordinance adjustments and I know other municipalities do it that way also. Where they say, you know, this car sales person was, you know, they stopped for two years and then this person took over. They don't have to go back because they've already been reviewed, they already have the amount of parking they need. Now, if they want to change that, then you have to come back for approval. That is something you guys can't do with your language, but just the way it's worded now. Any sort of change of use or you know, if it was one use, it changed to another, then it changes back, they have to come back.
It would seem like it ought to be a time limit.
Yeah.
Because you know, if it's been 25 years, it's reasonable to come back, but two years, it's probably not.
Yeah, our current time limit's one year. And that's why we see people back here. Now, it was a detailing place in the last year, but it's technically a different use, right? So that's why I had to come back. So I mean, maybe something like five years would be more reasonable, you know what I mean? Perhaps that would, but also you're still requiring them to get DOT approval because DOT will say, well, there's been three new developments on the street in the last five years, your plan no longer works. You know, stuff like that can be put into place, but even if you want to do three years, two years, just this one year thing, kind of, it gives you a lot of these applications.
Well, it may be reasonable to require, require notification to direct butters too.
Sure.
Not everyone that's within some distance.
Yeah, so that's something that we'll pass on to Thomas here, who's our new code official. So we'll do some introductions when we get to various, but he's just sort of learning how we do all this and yeah, so.
We lean heavily on Ryan.
I have to.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, so essentially what we've done since last month, you'll see in the packet. On number six, I'm going to show you all the crossouts, okay, on the first page of your ordinance changes. Second to get there. It'd be like the last four pages, yeah. Alright. Yeah, so you'll see, number six, I crossed out as determined by the state Fire Marshal's Office. Because I looked at the Fire Marshal's Office and they no longer have this standard. This standard is from the 1990s, that's the last edition of it. The Fire Marshal's Office no longer adopts this standard. So that's something where you could say, well, why do we have it? But I didn't have permission from you guys to remove it, so I just crossed out as determined by the Maine State Fire Marshal's Office and said current addition. Because if you do want to keep it, that's the way you would want to word it. Okay, so I, again, I've looked into that standard some. I don't have a copy of it word for word, but essentially it provides for protection in terms of, you know, like a hydrants and subdivisions and stuff like that. You know, you can have a hydrant with a water tank, right? And that's, that's an adequate way to meet this provision. I still see this in other small towns, so I would personally, I wouldn't recommend getting rid of it without replacing it with another standard. So is there another standard that's just as adequate? I haven't had time to do that research, but I do know that the Fire Marshal's Office no longer adopts it.
Any idea why they don't adopt it?
Yeah, so that's again, I, with the transition, I've had time to research that.
Because much of Maine is rural, rural, so it seems like it.
Yeah. Yeah, so the Fire Marshal's Office is kind of, you know, I think it's because the NFPA stopped updating the standard. They kind of have, they haven't updated it since the 90s. Yeah, so that might be why they kind of abandoned it, but we can still, even if the Fire Marshal's Office doesn't adopt the standard, we can still adopt it. Just as, you know, we're going to the 2021 code cycles here soon, we can adopt the 2024 as a town, we can be more stringent, that's no problem. But do we want to be? That's the question. So with this standard, you know, it might be worth some research, but I just think it hasn't been updated in that long and, you know. It's up to the town to decide on what they want. With that said, section seven, I cross that off because whether that's there or not, section 4.7 is still applicable. That's the rental housing standards. Essentially, if you rent a house out mechanic falls, you got to have smoke detectors, you got to have life safety. It's a good standard, I'm not saying get rid of that standard, what I'm saying is it doesn't belong here. It doesn't matter if it's here or not because it's still applicable. So I don't, I didn't get why we had it here, so. That's why that's crossed off and then you'll see the rest of it is everything we've discussed, so page two and beyond. Removing everything except for the use of camping trailers, RVs. With that said, I yeah, last month we discussed this. Taking ideas, but right now I sent out an email to code officials and planners, asking them for their ordinances on this. So we can compile them and bring them back to the planning board. And decide which part we like and which parts we don't like. So that would really, that should be coming in a future month with Thomas here on doing some research, but is being worked on, it's not ready yet. I would suggest not passing these changes until you work out that camper RV section, just so you're not continually chopping it up, you know, you can just do it all at once. It's up to you on how you do it, but my recommendation would just be to work on that. But ultimately, if you guys have any ideas right now, what you would like to see or what you would like to prevent. Or questions about statutes about it, you know, we can discuss that now, but if not, we can move on.
About giving people some leeway on this. So I'd be interested in whatever else you're doing in that picture.
Is it written somewhere, if there's a limit to how many calendar days per year?
Yeah, right now it's 180 days per year.
Is that, that's not included in this? Should we include it in this? Is this a good home for it?
We could, it's on the state statute. But if we put it in the local ordinance, we then have a little bit more power as a town. To have that local ordinance, we do have that, you know, they can't be there for more than 30 days at a time or within a calendar year, sorry. Without adequate waste disposal, but if they do install a septic, technically by state statute, they can be there for 180 days out of, out of the year. With that said, you are welcome to be more stringent if you want to be, but if you're looking to be less stringent, we can't do that. So essentially, you can't live in a camper 365 days out of the year. Yeah, so that's the rules. And then also defining adequate provision for proper disposal would be great. So is that a septic system, is having receipts from when you dumped it at a campsite or something, right? At a designated spot, is that adequate? I think there's some interpretation there that we should decide on.
Go place up north. Kind of veterans group or somebody up north. Go through quite a bureaucratic hassle to take the waste from his trailer to some other place. He was complaining about it, so I don't know how much, never dealt with it.
I can't hear Dave if he's talking, sorry.
Sorry?
I can't hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got a little closer to the thing, I've been there long enough to know that. I was talking to somebody who, when it came up north, lives in an RV or a camper, who had to go through disposal of waste to carry it away, human waste. And he had to go through quite a permitting or as you said, receipt to get it done and it was a kind of a bureaucratic slog to get it done. And I don't know how you get around that, but he, he was even talking about moving away from that town because they made it so difficult. I don't know, I don't remember the name of the town. That's all. It can be a real hassle for at least that one place.
Thank you, Dave.
So otherwise, you know, we can see what some other communities have done and I know this is a topic multiple communities are working on right now. Because when I sent that out, I had about two or three code officials reply and say, send me what you get because I'm working on that right now too. So we know it's a problem in a lot of communities right now. So that's where we're at with the, the latest round of the ordinance changes.
Yeah, pardon, just to make a comment on that, part of me is bothered. Because some housing is going for way more than it's worth. Yeah, you know, I have some compassion for some of these people that earn a normal salary. And then trying to pay these incredible fees to own a house.
And you'll see all of the year-round campsites, so you can technically live in a camper year-round as long as you're in a designated year-round campground. That have the hookups for the RVs and the sewage disposals, community sewage disposal typically. You can live there, but they're going to charge you a fee. But if you have land, you know, you can live there for 180 days and then you can move and live, you know, maybe 185 at your campground. That's, that's allowed. It, it just inconveniences people in the end, the state's got to decide what they're doing on this. But until then. But until then, you know, we can't allow people to live
So in theory.
For 180 days.
If they put a septic system and connect it to the camper.
Yeah.
They could live there.
Uh, for 180 days. Yeah.
Only 180 days.
Yeah. If they don't have a septic hookup, they can be there 30 days out of the year. And that would be someone camping on the weekends or something every once in a while. This is probably the number one violation dealt with in the code office.
Somebody sets up an RV on a large lot where there's already a house. They set it up because they're guests and they've been approved by the owner. And what's the limit on that?
Same, same limits.
Same limits. So, but you have to have written permission. It says written permission. Uh, it's a for the occupancy and for less than 30 days. So do you have written permission if somebody comes for less than 30 days?
So that's typically, is that written permission from the property owner?
Says, yeah, yeah. Private land, if the landowner has granted written permission for the occupancy.
I think that's specifying all the different ways. Um, on private land, if the landowner has granted written permission for occupancy. So that doesn't go through the code office. Uh, that's more or less making it so someone can't just go to a random piece of land and start parking there. I don't, I, that would be my best guess on that language.
So are there any action needed on this tonight? There isn't, is there?
Um, just discussion tonight. Uh, and you'll, in the future, you'll get some different uh, ordinances from other towns to look at and decide what you want to do with this. I know they are changing the definition of a seasonal dwelling unit in the next code cycle. But it's, it's just going to make it a little bit clearer on what a seasonal dwelling is. In the future though, we'll, we'll see what the state does, but this is popping up everywhere. You gotta think there's going to be legislation soon. We just got to kind of mend that gap between now and when there's legislation.
All right.
Ryan, is there additional documentation that you hear beyond like the initial packet for this meeting?
Sorry?
I'm not finding it. Is that additional documentation that you hear beyond the, your initial package that you set for this meeting? Cause I'm not finding.
The last four pages are the ordinances with all the crossouts. And on the third page, point K says use of camping trailers. But in terms of the other ordinances from other towns, it's not a part of this packet.
Okay.
She's asking, was it included in the email?
Yeah, I see it. I do see it now. Sorry. It's kind of buried. Thank you.
Oh yeah. It, this should be the same packet that sent an email. Yeah. I would say I.
That talked about potable water and they had to prove that they had potable water in addition. I guess I'm not seeing that here, but I feel like he had talked about that at one point also. In addition to like the sewage disposal.
Yeah. Um, I think a court, that's one of the clarifying rules in the state statute. So the definition of a seasonal dwelling unit, and I think they are targeting campers with this through building code. Uh, so the building code people are working on it too. They're saying that if you have year round access to water, you're no longer a seasonal dwelling. So that means that if you have a well on a random property, it's not a seasonal dwelling. It's now a permanent dwelling. It has to meet all the building codes and these campers do not meet the building codes. So they don't meet the energy code, structural codes, anything of that nature, space requirements. So it, but you do have camps that are on ponds that have seasonal water supply. So that's what they're still trying to allow for that. So that's one of the provisions here, but yes, access to that sort of water. If you want to be more than 30 days, that would be, I, I recognize that that is probably in a section of our, uh, ordinances about habitability. Uh, but we could very well add that to this part of the ordinance to make it clear, clear that if you're there for more than 30 days, you have to have water supply. And perhaps you can't have water supply for more than 180 days out of the year. Unless you're in again, an approved year round campground. So we do have zoning for that. So someone can start a year round campground here. But we don't have one.
No, we don't. Okay.
So with all the campers popping up, you know, maybe we will, we will get one eventually. But I know, and I think there's one in Durham, you know, that's the one, I think that's the closest one I know about. There might be one in Poland. But not for sure.
What exactly do, so there is not any, uh, written definition of what adequate disposal sewage is like, do, do, do they have to provide a receipt or like a timestamp or?
It's all up to the code enforcement officers or the board of appeals interpretation. So yeah, I'm answering you, there is no definition. So that would be great. I'm saying as a code official to get a definition and decide what that means. Do we want to say you have to be hooked up to a septic or do receipts also suffice? Or we could say adequate is means, you know, a septic system, receipts or other means approved by the LPI, the local plumbing inspector. You could do that too, because I don't know if there's another way to do it, but again, that you need a definition.
Yeah.
Um, one other thing that I know we pressed out when we talked about in our last meeting was regarding the swimming pool standards. Because the state of Maine has one, Ryan. And I looked at that further. And my concern is the state of Maine doesn't talk about when a swimming pool is no longer, um, able to be utilized and yet falling apart, whatever. Like I feel like in the future, we really need to consider building some parameters or an ordinance around that piece of it. Uh, because it really more so talked about the fencing piece of it and really the, the safety when it's in use, but not, you know, when it's no longer functional. And I know the specific place located in Sunnyside where the pool has flat. The owners actually have their young children and that becomes a safety hazard in my mind. Um, so I wonder if we need to consider, you know, building some parameters around that in the future.
Yeah. Um, I can, well, it's, so you want to look at the international residential code. Um, is where you would find it and you go to the swimming pool chapter. Those are the provisions adopted by the state of Maine. Um, there might also be an NFPA standard. So you'd want to go to the Maine state fire marshal website and look at their NFPA standards. Uh, there might be something about swimming pools specifically in NFPA 101. Um, but again, I, I haven't researched the 101. I looked through the IRC portion and I saw a lot of similar items from our ordinance and that, but I didn't see one off my memory about dilapidated pools. So I do know if you have like a dilapidated building or shed or something, that falls under the dangerous building ordinance. And that could be addressed. I don't know about swimming pools, if that falls under that definition. I can't say it does or doesn't.
Structure or?
That's, that's the tricky part. Is it a structure?
Yeah, definitely something we need to consider because I mean, you think about like the walls when they cave in and like
Yeah.
stuff up and young children around, you know, that, that definitely.
Uh, there's a definition of structure in our land use ordinance at the end. So that's what I would defer to.
Okay.
It could, it could. Yeah, it could be as simple as adding swimming pool to that definition. And then we would have adequate provision as a code official to address stuff like that. That's, that's something I didn't think of in this. So thank you for that.
Any more discussion? If not, we can move on to the updates for the CEO.
Well, this is my last five minutes in mechanic falls. So this is Thomas Moore. Thomas?
How's it going? So I've been here for the last two weeks or so. Um, Ryan has kind of teed me up to be in a pretty decent spot, actually. As far as everything that we've kind of been going over, ordinance changes and all of that stuff, um, I'm going to take some time and get some of my feet under me before I really come back to you with a lot of this. So if you have anything directly that you would like me to talk to you about, then just let me know. But aside from that, I'm, I'm going to work on getting kind of my certifications and learning and getting through the town and figuring out everything going on. So just to give you guys a heads up there. Um, yeah. I came from Lewiston, uh, as a grant manager. Uh, before that I did five years as, um, as a carpenter in general construction. So I've got kind of an idea of at least how to build things and what looks right and what doesn't.
There we go. So there you go. I put you on the hot seat. He, he did fine. All right. So no, there, there are no other updates really. I mean, we, we were just working on those ordinances. I filled Thomas in on a lot of what we've been doing. I've shown him a couple of council meetings, uh, planning board meetings. I suggested he goes and looks back at, kind of showed him the goals of what we want to do with our ordinances, gave him some helpful ordinances to look through, the ones we discussed at private, prior meetings and what his resources are. So he should, uh, again, once he gets his feet under him here and gets the certifications, he should be able to pick up this process and keep it, keep it moving forward. So it was important to Alan. I know when he left it to me, he said, make sure you work on these. We did. So same, same message to Thomas.
Supposed to be on the consent decree and the solar field. I mean, is everything going according to plan?
Yeah. Everything's going according to plan. So the solar field you'll see is under construction.
Right.
Um, I'll say the one on North Street did expire last month. So if they want to come back, they're going to have to go through the approval process underneath the new ordinance for a new approval. I do believe rural, however, is now zoned out. So they would need a waiver, um, for that, because they're technically not allowed in rural zoning. Um, and that is a rural zone parcel, parcel. So with that said, our only two approvals right now are the two on Lewiston Street. That joins.
Where you hoped it would be and everything is, are you getting any pushback on that?
Um, we'll, we'll talk.
Oh, okay.
We'll talk. Yeah. Rather than I say during a public meeting. Yeah. So yeah, everything is fine.
Okay. So that's it for business. I just want to say, Ryan, you've done an excellent job as a code enforcement officer and as a planning board person. And, uh, you've really raised the standards for, for us and you've done a super job.
Yeah, thank you.
So we will look forward to working with you, Tom. Hopefully you'll raise it even more.
I got some pictures.
You sure have.
Welcome.
Um, so with that said, uh, I guess motion to adjourn. You making the motion? Rebecca, you second it?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Okay.